It's five after, we'll get started. I can't start too late because former President Jordane is here and he will not let me start late. Welcome him and Mayor Pluta, former Mayor Pluta, former Councilor Pluta as well. With that, we'll call to order the December 4th, 2018 meeting. The city clerk will call the attendance.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley, Bresnahan, Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez, Lisi, McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The City of Hoyok.
Mr. President.
The Council.
Yes, Councilor Lee.
Can I ask for a moment of silence? We lost a good person this past week and past president and many other titles.
Yes, for 41st President George W. Bush, ask for a moment of silence, everyone. Thank you. With that, we'll take up item number one, which is the laid on the table Committee on Finance was referred in order, 22,500 from pay solicitor to pay assistance solicitor. Nothing there? Alright, we'll move on. Public comment, we do have one public comment. Liam Bevan, please come up to the mic, make sure it's on.
Hello?
Alright, perfect.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name's Liam Bevan. I'm a professional wetland scientist and have a background in hydrogeology. I recently learned that there would be a vacancy on the Water Commission, the Board of Commissioners. I've been a lifelong resident of the City of Hoyok and I think my background and experience would be an asset to the Board. I believe you all have a copy of my resume and cover letter and I'd like to take an opportunity in the near future to meet with all of you to discuss the possibility of me helping the City of Hoyok. With that, I'd just like to say thank you very much and I look forward to communicating with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. There is no one else for public comment? So, communications, communication number two from the city clerk, minutes of the November 20th, 2018 meeting.
Make a motion to receive.
Second.
Everyone had a chance to review, motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a question on number three.
Number three.
If we decide to vote against this, does this mean the gentleman from Ward Two has to stay? Have a legal opinion?
We can ask for that.
I'm just kidding.
I know everyone received this. It's a communication from Council Roman with regards to his informing the council that he's resigning from the Hoyok City Council effective Monday, December 31st. He was offered a new opportunity for another company in another state. So with that, he did ask me that if he could come up and say a few words with regards to the letter as well as everything else. So I will turn over to Council Roman.
Good evening to my fellow colleagues and to you, the citizens and members of the City of Hoyok, both here, in the chambers and at home. My name is Nelson Rafael Romang. For those of you who don't know, for all my colleagues you do know, I just want to say how immensely proud and honored and humbled it is to be standing behind this rail and on the shoulders of so many greats. And I thank my friend Kevin Jordane and Elaine Pluta for being here and I'll mention them in a little bit. To my current Council President McGee and to all of you, thank you for standing by me and with me these last three and a half years. I came to Hoyok as a young man in his early twenties, trying to find his purpose in life, trying to find asylum and safety after coming out of the closet and trying to start a new life. It was because of my struggles in Hoyok of being homeless and contracting HIV that I am now leaving in my early thirties with a clear sense of purpose, self-worth, and hopefully only time will tell, a legacy of action and moving forward for all Hoyokers. Tonight, Mr. President and my colleagues, you have all received my official letter of resignation from this prestigious body, the Hoyok City Council, makers of law, makers of history. From when I first entered the railings as a council-elect four years ago in November, I remember touching that banister, coming in and taking a moment to breathe. I remember being in the hallway with then-council-elect Mike Sullivan and both of us looking at each other with determination and an eagerness to get in here and get our work, get into work and get our hands dirty. I thank my colleague now, Council Valentine, thanks for letting me sit next to you. Thanks for kicking me under the railing, thanks for telling me to calm down and thanks for having my back. I came into this body with a mantra of putting people first and was moved by the words of former, a former US President that carried the work that I have done in my tenure here. Those who hunger for freedom, who thirst for human dignity and who suffer for the sake of justice, they are the patriots of this cause. That was former US President Jimmy Carter. I want to thank each and every one of you, my colleagues, starting with you, Todd McGee. Thank you, Mr. President, for really calming us down in this chamber this last term, for really coming to my house when you first were deciding to run and having that conversation and said, "Listen, Nelson, I'll make it plain and simple. I just want to get work done. I want us to be together and I don't want us to be torn apart no matter what's going on." I thank you for being a great friend, Todd, and you were one of the first people I called and the words you said to me, "Nelson, if it doesn't work out, you always have a place here in Hoyok and I'll help you any way I can if you want to come back," really meant a lot to me. Pete Tomlin and Joe McGivern, you are my mentors. I love to go to battle with you, especially you, Joe. It's my favorite thing in this chamber, but I love your words of wisdom after the fact. We can battle on the most difficult of issues and Pete, I always love it. Put up a good fight today, Nelson. That was a good fight. And whether I went down or up or we prevailed in a vote, your words always ring true. Danny Bresnahan, I loved our after-hour drinks and conversations about politics even though you're not here. Mike Sullivan, thanks for really taking the time to take me on tours and really help me understand things that I didn't get. Juan Burgos, I've been where you're at, my friend, the new guy on the bench, but you're going to do amazing things and I thank you for sitting next to me and for truly building a friendship and a bond. We've known each other for years outside of this and I just thank you for your friendship. Gladys LeBron Martinez, thank you for being a strong pillar in this community. Thank you for always having my back even in the Career Point days and thank you for helping this homeless guy get to where I'm at today. Rebecca Lisi, we battle like cats and dogs, but you really are like a sister and I wouldn't have it any other way. Thank you for always sharing your voice, even in a room full of dissenting opinions. You always stay strong and continue to be that voice. Jimmy Leahy, my friend, one Hoyok, you're a movement in and of yourself. I really thank you for just reaching out to me personally, no matter what's going on, no matter what you're hearing. I always know you're a phone call away and I always can count on you to just bounce ideas off of and if I've ever been struggling in this chamber, man, you've really been there. Thanks, Jim. Linda Bacon, I'm truly thankful because out of everyone in this body, believe it or not, financially you and I are eye to eye. Kevin, sorry you're not here anymore or else I would say you're in there with us. But I truly thank you for being steadfast, especially with the stabilization, for coming up to me when there was tough times in the media and everything else and saying, "Nelson, I'm sorry you're going through this and I'm proud to stand with you and when others truly come at you, I truly think you're another strong voice and a woman in this body and I thank you for being who you are." I purposely left two councils for the end, Josie Valentine and Dave Bartley. Josie, we didn't see eye to eye at the beginning of our friendship and relationship, but you reached out to me. You are truly a pillar among pillars and I thank you for everything that you've done. I have a special gift for you tonight, similar to Senator Edward Kennedy who was our liberal lion in the Senate. Josie, you're the liberal lion here in the Hoyok City Council to me and I'm the worst artist in the world, but Josie, you are the liberal lion of the Hoyok City Council and this is for you, my friend. Counselor Bartley, man, oh, man. It's been a difficult personal time for me in my home. My dad left and stopped talking to my family about two years ago, but you truly become like a father figure to me, Dave. You don't even know it. You truly have been there, a sense of reason. Sometimes people get on you for being passionate and I think that I'm just a younger version of you, but I truly take all your pearls of wisdom to heart and you have truly become my friend. I thank you for all of your late-night conversations, your texts at all hours of the night. Thank you so much, Dave, for truly being there and guiding me, to show me what it's like to be a good chairman of a committee and to always, always, despite popular and public belief, allow the public to speak, to have a voice and to be present in these chambers, my friend. I don't have any specific gift for you as far as a plaque or anything, but I do want to take you out to dinner, my friend, one last time because of, because of those dinners and because of those conversations that I feel I've become a better public servant. And because of your astute studying and homework, Dave, I knew that every packet, every paper that came across my eyes, I had to read, every MuniCode thing that came up, I had to learn and that's because of you, Dave Bartley. Thank you so much for your friendship. Kevin Jordane and Elaine Pluta, I really want to take this time to thank both of you. Elaine, when I came to this city and I first got involved in politics, and yeah, I switched over to your team, people gaslit me, they called me a liar, they called me a thief, they called me everything under the sun and it's because of those two individuals right there, a Republican and a Democrat, who stepped up and gave this young Puerto Rican boy a chance to run your campaign and I was proud to do it. I still have my "Love Pluta" button and it's because of you, Elaine, and your sacrifices for the Puerto Rican community that you don't get enough credit. I thank you for giving up your seat in Ward Two and to allow Diostado to run for 20 years and Anthony for four and now me for three. So for me today, Elaine, I know it's not a lot and I didn't make this piece of art, but you are an adopted and honorary Puerto Rican and I want to thank your kids, Tommy, Tony and Donna. I'll never forget the night you lost your election. Me and Donna were out on the docks and we put glitter into the air and Donna said, "Nelson, you're going to go places." And I thank you for everything you did for my mom and I said, "No, I thank your mom for everything she did for me." I love you, Elaine. You are a friend. I did miss your naming ceremony down on Ray Street, but I just wanted to take this time to say if I could tattoo your name to my heart forever, I will and I thank you, Elaine Pluta, and for that, you are an honorary Puerto Rican, Elaine Pluta, and here, this is for you. Kevin Jordane, my friend, I think our relationship and friendship really perplexes a lot of people in my circles and world, but what I tell people, especially in this political climate and era, I can have a great friend who we vehemently can disagree on policies and procedures and yes, he could have been at a one presidential convention and debate for a different candidate than I supported, but he is still my friend because when push came to shove, you supported me. You had my back, you didn't allow people to talk badly about me and you were there every step of the way in my political journey and process. I'm grateful for our great orientation we had at Dunkin' Donuts, for you inviting me to your home to meet your lovely wife and kids and you truly have had my back all these years and still from helping my mom to helping me. Kevin Jordane, I don't know that I'd be the council I am today without you. Now, I know we had our annual Christmas party. I stole this from you, my friend, at our Yankee swap, but I'm gifting this to you, Kevin, because you deserve it as a thank you from me to you.
He's hoping for the scratch tickets.
I use my example of Kevin and I's friendship to show that camaraderie and strength, even when we differ from one another, is truly what I love about being in this body and being with you all. Parts of this job over these last years that I found the most rewarding and challenging are this. I love when we can come together and celebrate and do things like collect coats for the needy or we did the greet the children event or we've had a Three Kings Day revival or we raised the Puerto Rican flag in South Hoyok or we had the Taste of South Hoyok Festival and our Churchill Block parties and we came together, all of us, united. We didn't care, all the fights stopped, we all got on stage, we all danced, we all sang. But there were moments that hurt me and still hurt me. I had by far too many constituents who are unable to make ends meet and who can't even afford funeral costs in the neighborhood. Too many young people are being locked up and contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline. There are far too many fires going on again in our city. Gentrification, in my opinion, is happening in this city and we need to combat that and that safety and crime are still realities for deep pockets of my ward and my community. There are still individuals who do not feel safe and I'm still going to, of course, I'm a politician, implore that the mayor and the new chief fill the civilian data statistician position that Kevin and I filed that is created by this body in ordinance and is still not filled to this day because unless we know what specific crimes are occurring in our neighborhoods, we cannot combat them. We had a great legislative accomplishments together and I say "we" because it's because of you, my colleagues and the people. We created the Puerto Rican Cultural Area in Hoyok and I thank you for that. We unanimously passed calling for the freedom of Oscar Lopez Rivera and he was free because of it and he made Hoyok his third stop. We approved the Community Preservation Act. We are repairing Suce Park and Valley Arena Park. We have done really good work to get the Urban Agenda Grant here and in and around Carlos Vega Park to rebuild homes. We did basic things like sidewalk repairs and handicap stickers and Carmen and Jerry are here tonight and I thank Carmen, the President of the South Hoyok Neighborhood Association, who's become like a sister and Jerry, even like a brother, to getting their parking lines that they were waiting for 10 years to be painted down in South Hoyok. It's those little quality of life issues that we've begun to change together. I'm hoping, as a body, even though I'm gone, we can still take up progressive legislation that I filed, the Civilian Police Commission that is so desperately needed in Hoyok, a Human Rights Commission with teeth, a gentrification mitigation zone order and the rezoning and cleaning up of our zoning in South Hoyok. And I have to honor this amazing shiro who's here tonight. I'm so grateful to this body for last meeting when we passed unanimously the Ban the Box Order that my friend Jafet Robles and the Neighbor to Neighbor crew fought and I want to acknowledge Jafet's mom who's here tonight. Can you please stand up? He was shot down in Zap Park. Can you give her a round of applause, please? And I just want to thank you and your son publicly. A lot of people don't know, but I have and I've still been in recovery for about 10, 11 years from drugs when I was on the street and Jafet was my sponsor and when he left my life, a big part of my life left, but I still pray and I still am so thankful to your son for saving me from tight spots. I would like to thank some city department heads who really took the time to show me how important the matters of the day were in their department and I want to call out their work and thank them. Marcos Moreno in the Planning and Economic Development Office, Barbara, Sarah, Debbie and John, Damian Coting in the Building and Planning Department and Brenna McGee Murphy and your entire team. You have a great team and in my opinion, yes, I'm being biased, one of the hardest working departments in the city. I want to thank you, Brenna, for everything you guys do and I really want to thank Irma and Polo for the amazing job that they do. All the little posted notes, the Polo leaves me in my back and I love them. I know, I'm showing bias last minute, you're all going to be pissed. Don't kill Polo, please. He's my constituent and my friend, but I really want to thank you, Brenna. Thank you so much. I remember when you first ran and I was there to support you and I'll still support you. What is my vision for the future of this city? I would love to see the City of Hoyok be a city that has 51% people of color and women running and leading boards and commissions, finally a Latinx mayor, a majority Latinx council and school committee. The local control of our schools must be taken back and returned to our elected representatives and a recall provision must be passed for any elected officials with more than four years in their term. A city that is a true green economy, that takes into account social justice and equity and removes systemic barriers and completely removes the prison industrial complex from our daily lives. No frac gas and additional pipelines are needed in Hoyok. Yes, Black Lives Matter and yes, we need to have a Hoyok movement of people of color that is not run, with all due respect, by white progressive saviors. And yes, LGBT individuals in our city, including our trans kindred, need better protection here in the City of Hoyok, justice for Roxana. You're all wanting me, I'm sure, I've had some questions already asked, to support or name who I would like to see as my successor. I will not in any way officially announce or support any of those candidates who have come to me or are vying for the position with all of you. I know the phone calls have already begun. I will say in jest and in homage to a great constituent in my ward, Maria Ferrer of MT Beauty is already affectionately known as the Alcaldeza of Ward Two or the mayor of Ward Two and if she ever were to run for elected office, I would support her wholeheartedly. She's not, she's not interested in the position, but I think she's a fine woman and I know you all know her as well. But I leave the decision up to you. I know you guys have a good head on your shoulders, you have a good heart and we've done it once before sadly and I think we made a great decision in filling the position and I know that you all will do the same. Lastly, I have a city that will continue to invest in our stabilization fund and protect it at all costs. Brighter days, yes, may seem like they're ahead, but there is always something on the horizon that darkens and threatens our financial, our fiscal sun. A city that welcomes industry that is going to allow minority and women to have not just a seat at the table, but ownership and not just high-paying part-time jobs. Thank you. Thank you to Carmen, Jerry, Donna Marata, Marilyn Nunez, Raymond, Irene Mildred, Elizabeth and all the constituents who have helped me, to my Imperial Court and LGBT communities, to Gloria, to Angel, to Mike Plaisance even from the Republican and Manuel Frau. Thank you for covering me sometimes fairly and sometimes a bit skewed in my own opinion, but I've always respected your journalistic integrity and now I can say that we can be friends. To the Board of Directors and Staff of Nuevo Esperanza Inc., thank you for allowing me the opportunity to lead such a prestigious nonprofit. Thank you to Capri Pizza for feeding me one slice of pizza a day when I was homeless, to Morgan Elementary School, Dean Veritas Prep, Hoyok and STEM for welcoming me in as a public official, to all of the amazing labor organizations who have supported us and our entire movement, SEIU, UFCW, the Carpenters Union, PvP, Pioneer Valley Labor Council and the Neighbor to Neighbor Hoyok Chapter, Jackie and Elvis and your team, thank you. And to my dear friends Calvin Feliciano and Ahmad Rivera and Kim, thank you for standing with me. And to my brother across the lake, man, I'm glad you're here tonight and he gets me emotional, man. Adam Gomez, City Council from Springfield, thank you so much. You truly have been like a brother to me out here. To the amazing youth of the City of Hoyok, this is your legacy, this is your future. My biggest sense of joy from young people was this last year in the fall, I was teaching a workshop for Hoyok Bound at Pet School. On this wall in this classroom I've never been to and a teacher I've never met, they had change agents on their wall. There was Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, President Barack Obama, Reggaetonero Farruko, rapper J. Cole, Mayor Alex Morse, Myron Maude Lin-Manuel Miranda and the kids chose me. A homeless guy from the street who had nothing and the kids chose me as one of their change agents. I leave this community, hopefully showing young people that you can stay should you choose to stay in your community and make a difference, but that it is okay if you are called to brighter futures and to bigger lands. You can change the world wherever you go and still be proud to be from the City of Hoyok. I, of course, would be remiss if I didn't thank Manuel Hernandez and all of his support over these last couple of years, my mom, Yvonne, my two brothers, David, who's just finishing the priesthood and my brother Ivan who just got his master's degree in communications. And I think one of the greatest lessons that I've ever learned about the Hoyok City Council and the city overall is summed up by former President Barack Obama during his farewell address to the nation. Understand, my friends, that democracy does not require uniformity. Our founders quarreled and compromised and expected us to all do the same, but they knew that democracy does require a basic sense of solidarity. The idea that all of our outward differences, we are all in this together, that we rise or we fall as one. I believe we need to take the same approach here in the City of Hoyok. Yes, we quarrel. Yes, we defend our views vehemently, but we also must compromise and find common ground. I look into the eyes of each and every one of you, my colleagues, and I see and feel that you are all that mantra. We have battled and yet we compromise and I hope that that continues in this body. I would not be me if I didn't implore the city and the community and this nation to please continue to support and help Puerto Rico in this time of need as it continues to rebuild even a year later. We, as a nation and as a city, need to have conversation about what a free and independent Puerto Rico looks like and what a free and independent people here look like. When tyranny is the law, revolution is in order and that is from Dr. Pedro Alvesu Campos. Que viva Puerto Rico libre. Thank you all so much and God bless you.
My time in Hoyok, no, just kidding. Thank you very much for that, Nelson. Did anyone have anything to say or?
I don't think your mic's on, Ty.
It's on. Alright, so with that, we'll move on. Mike, did you have something or? Okay. Alright, so, communication number four from the Assistant City Solicitor deals with the resignation and replacement rules. This corresponds regarding the recent resignation of...
Make a motion to receive.
You see your Friday Communion Public Service?
Motion is received and refer to public service. There was a question on that. What is the process? In essence, it has to be a Ward Two resident of which the city council will advertise the position, like we did last time when Jen Shattenoff, last Councilor Shattenoff that is, will advertise the position, send it to public service, they'll do the interviews of those who do apply and then the next city council meeting after that committee meeting, the council will vote and one who gets seven votes, I always forget that it's 13.
Ty, what's the timeframe you're looking at?
Well, it, no? At public comment?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
You want to do it that way again?
Yeah.
Just have him speak at public comment?
Sure.
Okay.
So maybe the first meeting of, maybe next meeting, they could do that and the first meeting we could pick him?
First meeting in January?
Yeah.
Okay. Because his resignation is not until the 31st.
Yeah.
Right, so the first meeting in January.
So it'll be the first meeting in January, we'll have it at the public comment and then you can vote. Do it that way?
Yeah.
Alright, so that is the process.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Counselor Lee.
So, just looking forward to January of next year, our first meeting would be, which date? Because the first Tuesday is January 1st. Are we moving it then to the 8th?
It'd have to move, it'd have to move to the...
To the 8th as opposed to Wednesday, the second meeting?
Whatever, yeah, so if we're falling on a holiday, you'd have to either take it up to the next city council meeting or you'd have to schedule like we do with elections on the Wednesday. So whatever that, whatever that date is in your calendars.
So, so we'll just anticipate that it'll be the 8th at this point in time?
So that's what it is, I signed my calendar up. So the 8th is what we're saying?
Yeah, okay.
Everyone agree on that or?
Sure.
And then will we meet again the following Tuesday, which is the 15th, which would be the 3rd?
Correct, the 3rd Tuesday.
3rd Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's what we'll do. We'll have it on the 8th. Counselor Bacon.
I just don't have all my papers in front of me. I'm just not sure if we haven't continued something to the 8th in ordinance because that's typically our meeting. I just can't remember exactly if we have continued something to that date or not at this moment.
Well, January 1st, so, no, normally what we do, like in an election cycle would be, now I have my calendar open. It'd be the 2nd, the Wednesday, so January 2nd would be, in essence, the next scheduled meeting. You could file an order to make it the 8th and then meet on the 15th. You could, what we've done in the past is skip the first meeting because it falls on a holiday and then go to the 15th. It'd be the pleasure of the body as to what you want to do. We've kind of done it, bless you. Done all of them. We'll have to file an order on it, but what is the consensus?
Can you just send an email around to get people's feedback and we can make a decision at the next council meeting?
Okay. But you understand all the different options?
Yep.
And then we'll file it for that meeting. We are off to communication number five from the Assistant City Solicitor. It's the collective bargaining agreement for IAAF Local 1693.
Make a motion to receive to finance.
To finance, all those in favor?
President.
Yes, Counselor McGivern.
If I could, just two things. I was talking to the President right before the meeting is, I was unaware that we have a late-file communication addressing free cash and I know it's going to be taken up later in the evening. We don't have an appropriation in front of us from the... the mayor yet. It's not filed late, and as far as I know, I'm not sure exactly what the mayor's going to be doing. But I just wanted to, just to note that, I've, my email server on my phone is not updated, and Rebecca just noticed that I went from a 5 to an 8. So I'm growing up in this world there, Mr. President, you know? Now, if I can get my emails back going, I'll be able to receive it. But we will, we are meeting on Monday, but it's unlikely we'll take this up until we know what the mayor is going to do in terms of funding the contract.
Right, all you have before you is a, in essence, a communication. You need the appropriation to go with it in order to vote on something.
Shran to committee.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Counselor President.
I filed an order, number 28. I don't know if that can be piggybacked on this, and I don't know if the city solicitor has any information with respect to this union contract, that we are under the assumption that's been approved.
Make a motion to take up item 28 as well?
Motion is to suspend the rules, go out of order to item 28. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. From Counsel Bresnahan, order that the city solicitor and the auditor file the memorandum of understanding with the Hoyok Fire Department Union immediately so it can be voted on by the city council in 2018.
I just believe that there's a financial timeframe upon us that if we don't allocate the money in 2018, the, we're going to owe more money. Basically, the bottom line is that. So I just don't know. I mean, maybe Crystal, if you could speak to that, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion would be to suspend the rules to allow legal counsel to speak. All those in favor? All those opposed?
So I've spoken with the auditor. We were waiting for free cash to get certified before they can figure out how to go about the financial transfer to appropriate for this contract. I have a feeling it's going to be forthcoming now that that's completed. I don't have information for you as to whether that needs to be done in, by the end of the year or not. I can certainly find out, but I know that we wanted to get the contract out, so you could start your review on that. But I assume that the financial transfer is probably going to be submitted for next council meeting, and I can follow up with the auditor and make sure that gets done. But as of right now, we don't have that transfer completed.
Counsel President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, do you foresee any ramifications if this goes past, you know, 2018 and into 2019? Fiscal ramifications, I guess, would be?
I'm unsure. I wasn't a part of this negotiation, so I'd have to look into it and discuss with one of the other assistants, but...
Even if you just email me or emailed the council, just to let us know what your findings are, I would appreciate that?
Yep. If we're under any deadline, I'll certainly let you all know that a vote needs to happen, and we'll make sure it gets done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so 28 would be to refer to finance? Or is it complied with, or what?
Well, if I may, Counsel McGivern, Joe, the order that's here, is that, or the communication, I mean, is that, do I need to send this to your committee, or?
Well, I think you just announced your intent with the order. I think just adopting it takes care of it. And I think the message is sent. Unfortunately, like I said, and the President said, we don't have an appropriation in front of us.
Right.
And there's, we have to balance the budget with the free cash to begin with. We have no choice there. And then we have options of, well, there might be other options of how to fund things that need to be funded, but we have nothing to vote on right now because we don't vote on contracts, we don't negotiate. We vote on the appropriations that they, that they call for. And we'll take it up as soon as we get the appropriation.
Right, so you're of the opinion that it's at the mayor's feet?
I knew the MOU or the contract was on the agenda this evening. I didn't know free cash was certified, and that's because my email server was down. But I believe we're going to be doing a lot at the next fiscal, at the next city council meeting in terms of balancing the budget, because we have to also get the tax bills out, or we're going to be back in the situation we are this year, where money came in after July 1st. So in the next two weeks, there's going to be a lot on our table in terms of balancing the budget, and certainly we'll do whatever we can to work this in.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Joe.
Counsel Sullivan, you have something?
Just wondering if we could cut to the chase and take up the late file and see what free cash is?
Alright, so first, item 28 is your order that's been adopted, receiving adopt. That's what it was?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, take up late file orders.
Take up late files, which there are... The one we're talking about is from the auditor, is late file C. So take up late file C. All those in favor? All those opposed? This will confirm that the State Department of Revenue has certified our 2018 free cash as follows. $484,355 free cash, $865,059 adjusted free cash, for a total free cash of $1,349,948. The adjusted free cash represents a fiscal year 2018 revenue that was delayed by the late mailing of the tax bills and not collected until fiscal year 2019. Against this total, we need to cover the following deficits: $351,737 for fiscal year 2019 operating budget, $418,474 for health insurance deficit, $32,984 for sewer fund retained earnings deficit, $323,590 for other fund deficits, for a total deficit of $1,126,785. So free cash was certified at $1,349,984, but total deficits, it's $1,126,785. Attached to that is the communication from Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue, of which it says that they, the Bureau has, the Bureau of Accounts is in receipt of your November 30th, 2000 letter requesting free cash update for the city of Hoyok. We agreed to update the free cash amount by the $865,059, provided that the prior certification of the 2019 tax recap for the Bureau accounts, that the city agrees to funds of 323, and then all the stuff that I just read you for deficits. The local Division of Services remains committed to working collaboratively with the city. If you, if we may be of further assistance, please feel free to contact Matt Andre, the representative, for questions. And then they give an attachment of the deficits.
Make a motion to accept this and to copy the finance?
Motion is to receive and refer to finance, take final action. Under discussion, Counsel.
This is the date of the DOR letter.
Received today, December 4th at 3:32. The date of the letter is December 3rd. So it was received today at 3:32, date stamped. Yep. But it's dated from the auditor, December 3rd. The letter from the Department of Revenue is dated today, December 4th.
Thank you.
Motion is to receive and refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? With that, I did file late file order D.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to take it up?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is an order that we invite in Matt Andre from the Department of Revenue to discuss the deficits and what they're, in essence, looking from us, because that's kind of what the letter reads. They want us to address it. So a motion would be to receive and refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So the letter from the auditor was A, and the letter from the Department of Local Services is?
So...
C.
Auditor, C's.
C was, the auditor attached to it was the letter from DOR. D was my order to invite the DOR into address their concerns.
Got it, thank you.
Make a motion to take up item number 6.
Counsel McGivern?
If I could, I'm sorry. With us this evening is Sergeant Hart. There is a late filed for a traffic grant. There's a timing issue with the traffic grant itself. I would make a motion to suspend the rules to take it up for final action.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up late file B. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Order that in accordance with Master on Law, Chapter 44, Section 538, the city council hereby accept the revisions of the 2019 traffic enforcement and equipment grant, of which... For $13,200, the grant will enhance our traffic enforcement efforts, which are in conjunction with our mission to provide residents with a safer community, better quality of life. From Captain Pivo.
What's the amount of the grant?
Make a motion to pass the first reading?
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Really quick, and as I said, Sergeant Hart is here to answer questions. As we know, Sergeant Hart is the maker of many of the grants that come through the police department. The timing thing is, this is something that is, it's the second year, I believe, that we've had this type of grant, which is about traffic enforcement, and enhances the work of the Hoyok Police Department in putting extra patrols out during a holiday season in terms of enforcing traffic impairment, driving issues, enforcing issues of intersections and speeding and things of that nature. The money can be used starting December 13th, if I got my dates correct, and they want to use it as, use it in conjunction with, I believe, through December 31st. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, or if there are other questions, I would suggest we ask Sergeant Hart to answer them.
Motion would be to suspend the rules to allow...
Well, nobody has any questions.
No.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
If there's no questions, I think we're all set.
Alright, so, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call if you vote yes. You're voting for the grant. We pulled the name, and it is LeBron Martinez, Counsel LeBron Martinez, first.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Toman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Back to six, from the CPA Committee, Rules and Preservation Act Committee, their...
Make a motion to receive and send a copy to every counselor?
Motion is to receive. If no one has a copy, I believe it was emailed, but if you don't, please ask, we'll get it to you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions, seven. So they're all the same, or?
Motion to take up seven, eight, and nine as a package.
Motion is to take up seven, eight, and nine as a package. It's a petition for polls in wiring locations, 25 Pinehurst Road, corner of Dunav, 34 Pinehurst Road, corner of Dunav, and 20 and 24 Dunav.
Motion to set up a public hearing at our next scheduled meeting?
Let's just have a public hearing for the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? President's report. I was in Virginia yesterday and today. I'm super tired because I've been up since 4:30. That's my report. I'm done now. Just a reminder, and I'll hopefully send out an email to other department heads, we do have the buckets for coats and sweaters. There is a great need for them. Fill it up. If you have a coat that you just don't like anymore, someone else might like it. So if you can donate to the coats, that would be very helpful. Other than that, I do believe everyone's updated on all the communications that I have received thus far. Anyone else that has anything to report?
No.
Alright, with that, reports of committees. Ordinance, there were none. Finance, 11A. Committee on Finance requires referred in order that bond council be invited to discuss the effects and options available for bonding for two new middle schools. Recommended that the order be complied with.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up 11B and 11C for discussion.
Second.
Second.
You want to take up 11A?
All three together.
All three together, okay. Motion is to take up all three. Suspend the rule, take all three up together. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 11B, Committee on Finance referred in order that the city assessor provide an opinion on the effects of the two middle schools, and C is the Committee on Finance referred in order that the school department prepare a summary of potential savings and additional costs for the two middle schools. All have been recommended that they've been complied with.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I think everyone knows, we had a, what I call a fact-finding mission meeting last Wednesday, where we had a number of stakeholders before us in terms of the middle school project. We, I believe we're all up to date on what the middle school project proposals are. We have voted twice now to allow funding for the design and schematic design and development of two middle schools. That money is in the form of a bond at the moment, and those monies are being spent with both a project manager, an architect, and a construction consultant and potential developer themselves. We've talked about the middle school project, so tonight, these orders were filed by numerous counselors in, with request that we put together some of the stakeholders to understand what the long-range financing options are. The key player who was great to join us was Cinder McNairy, who came up from Boston. Cinder has been a financial consultant advisor with the city since 1973. She currently is a financial vice president for a company down in the Boston area, and still works very well with the city of Hoyok, both with our treasurer, our auditor, and with the mayor when needed. Cinder gave us a presentation about the number of different options. She spent time on what an override, deficit fund override would be. She spent time talking about, you know, the more conventional bonding for projects, and she spent time on looking and kind of talking about the status of the city of Hoyok. Some of the things she did say, just real briefly, included commending the city of Hoyok for not letting our budget grow since back in fiscal 1992, when we had a very difficult fiscal situation, where we had a $5 million deficit that had been ongoing for several years, and that was corrected with the help of the voters and an override at that time. She also talked about the stabilization fund, which was created shortly after that, answered a number of questions about the stabilization fund, including an order that was filed by Counselor Sullivan. I'm sure he'll address in a moment. We also had our assessor in because Cinder was in tune with the average values of our homes, with the tax levy, with the tax ceiling. For the first time in some years, we've seen where we are able to use some of our new growth, which is a good thing. We are no longer hitting the ceiling. For the first time in some years, we, our budget grew. I believe our head chief assessor gave us a figure of 1.4, 1.6 million in that area in terms of additional levy and additional growth itself. Again, this was a fact-finding mission. There is no final vote for us to take at this evening. As the project design goes forward, our next look will be when we know the true cost of the project itself, and when the mayor proposes to us how he wishes to fund the project itself, then that could kick off a series of votes that we would, and decisions that we would have to make as the appropriating body overseeing the mayor. Only the mayor can initiate any appropriation. One note, we talked about this, and we talked about it with Cinder, is, and we hope, because there's been some discussion by more than one of us with our state rep, Aaron Vega, is that there'll be some movement on the current reimbursement formula used by the MSBA. The current formula is there's a construction cap, which, with the proposals we got in front of us, we would hit the construction cap at about 58, 59%, maybe 60% reimbursement if we like. The issue is, we, as a gateway community, are guaranteed, not guaranteed, we are an 80% community, but that doesn't change the funding gap, which is sad, because there are communities that can, there are five incentives that allow a community to go over the construction cap, and we would hit at least three of those incentives, increasing the reimbursement percentage itself. But incentives are not allowed for gateway communities that are already at 80%. percent. My question is, we're not at eighty percent, if we're not getting eighty percent, so why can't we use the incentives? And we're hoping that the state rep and maybe our, our state senator will be able to see some, some budgeting on that, and down in Boston, we're told that there is discussions going on. Unfortunately, I disagree with the construction cap itself under any circumstances. I think, you know, we've been, over the years, receiving eighty to ninety percent reimbursement. But I thanked all, the mayor joined us, our city treasurer was there, both our acting auditor and our new auditor was there, and we had a very, very healthy discussion, and I think most of the city councillors that weren't present caught up onto it on, on a link or on TV itself. But we, we are certainly prepared when the time comes to make our decisions, and again, I thank the player, all the players that came in to help us with the sorting out the various options.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, and quite frankly, one of the things that we found out that night is not only we're not at the eighty percent, but we're not really close to it. I believe, what you said, we're around fifty-six percent, which is kind of a startling stat. So, when we're looking to build two different middle schools, we're going to have to take a lot of consideration. One is, that's going to put the tax base for the residential about, was it two dollars higher? And, and that would also put the business over forty dollars. And one of the, my concerns is, is this going to affect the students? Will their grades improve? Will the stats improve for the children as well? So, there's a lot of different things that we're going to have to take into consideration. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed an order that will be taken up later, and one of the things that Cinder emphasized repeatedly during this meeting was how imperative it is that we have a financial plan, both to sustain our stabilization fund, to stabilize our debt, and that this be a written, formal plan. She really made a big point of that. And she also made a couple of statements that kind of took me a little bit by surprise. We have an A-plus bond rating, and we thought, wow, that's good, because it used to be B or whatever. She said the average rating is AA. So, A-plus might feel good, but we're really below most other communities with our bond rating, and she emphasized that we should take steps to make sure that we protect that rating and have the goal of moving that rating to double A. It's more of a standard for municipalities. So, those are a couple takeaways. There was a, it was a packed meeting with information, but...
Counselor Bartley?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just going to make a few brief points. I'll ask my voice, which I know is a blessing for most of you, but I, but I, it's coming back, and I'll be, I'll be ready for the second meeting, I assure you. So, let me make a couple points, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the chairman for, again, running an excellent meeting. It is not easy, having chaired a committee that requires a lot of forethought for the last five years to organize it. It takes a lot of effort to corral all that. So, I really want to thank the chairman for the great work there. I'm going to summarize the points that I made in a rapid-fire round. Cinder was, is a real blessing for the city of Hoyoke. She talked about having a plan for, for the schools. Mr. President, there is no plan. This is a proposal. A plan is thinking this out years in advance, setting the money aside, getting our act together. There's not, let's not pretend there's a plan here. There's no plan for the schools. There's a proposal. She brought up several examples of other communities setting aside funds for years. We don't have that. So, don't pretend there's a plan here. And to prove it, we don't even control the two sites. We were promised at our first October meeting, right at the rail, with the chief of staff, we're going to get an appraisal for you, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to tell you what's going on with the property, with the problem of the ground. To date, two months later, nothing. So, we do not even control the second site upon which the second school will be built. That's the plan? There's no plan. So, we heard from the chief financial officer of the school department, you know, to my friend's comment about saving, helping the kids, what does this do? He talked about saving three and a half million dollars. He didn't talk about anything other than layoffs and cutting bus routes. That's what he spoke about, and he also mentioned closing Metcalf School, which I didn't realize. So, there's your plan. As far as the stabilization goes, Mr. President, what a joke. We've been, we've heard for years how great we are. We're not, we're not even in the middle. We're below average on stabilization. We found that out from, from Cinder. We're below average. And the bond rating, you just heard the counselor say, we're below average on that. So, those are facts. So, at least we got those on the table before us. Just going to make a couple of brief points, Mr. President, if I may. We have no proposal before us, except this one, to have two schools. We don't have for one school. I sat on the mic when we were here at finance, everyone believes we need the best schools we can have for our city. We all believe that. But we don't have before us any plan for one school, never mind for two schools. We, we don't have anything. But Cinder spoke about that. She emphasized that. Not happening. I wasn't there with the part where the chairman mentioned that she praises the city of Hoyoke for, for not letting our budget grow. I don't, I don't remember that part, but, you know, I mean, our budget's grown pretty heavily since ninety-two, but, but maybe she, maybe she in fact did say that. So, Mr. President, with, with all due respect to, to everyone who's at the Finance Committee, and they do a great job, and they're all, they're all patriots and advocates for the city of Hoyoke, there's a huge gap between what the executive branch proposes and what reality is. The dollar amount, and by the way, by the way, we've heard the rhetoric about, well, maybe we'll get our reimbursement from Boston. Let me, let me give a little, just a touch, a dose of reality. It's not going to happen. We're not going to get reimbursed eighty percent. And by the way, on top of that, we have to get our act together by February. That's according to the lady from the Mass Building Association, whose name escapes me right now. Not going to, you think the legislature is all of a sudden going to give us a reimbursement rate from sixty to eighty percent beginning now in February? Not going to happen. Just pretend that, pretend that comment, it's never going to happen that way, because it doesn't happen for anywhere else. The only thing we have is a proposal, big deal. This is the first time ever you get two new schools, big deal. Well, why hasn't it ever happened, Mr. President? Because it can't happen. Fiscally, it would be irresponsible. We, we pass this in this body, we put out to a vote to the public, and the public passes it, we lose. The public rejects it, we lose. Instead of planning something out years in advance, where we set aside funds, like we have with the stabilization, thank God we didn't give the raises last year. Thank God we stopped that. That was voted on, majority here passed it. Passed it to give raise from stabilization. I said this to Cinder. She just didn't comment. She's an intelligent person, but she was, I think she was kind of glad we didn't, we didn't pass raises through a stabilization account, because we were even worse off than we are. But again, Mr. President, it was a wonderful meeting. I learned a lot. I really thank the chairman for running a great meeting that night. I was very happy to be there, and that'll pass on. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Couple things, Mr. President. Your order was also talked about with the schools, and Counsel Bartley touched on that. Where both Doctors Reich at one time and Anthony Solder were here, and they had said prior that they would be closing probably two schools, if not three schools, and the estimated savings would be three point five million dollars. The interesting part is, there was not much of a commitment in terms of what could be turned over in terms of reducing the cost of the two new schools, but that's something that's certainly will be open for a discussion. And the part about Metcalf was talked about, it's been on discussion, you know, in, in prior years in terms of closing it, and I think there might be some resale value in terms of making it into apartments and market-rate apartments, and that's something I think could be explored. That money could be used to reduce the bond, without question. The, the other issue is, and I, you know, I think, I don't have Counselor Bartley's loud raspy voice here, but I think the point about no plan is, is something that we should all be aware of, is in Massachusetts, things are done backwards. When, when you are doing capital projects of any size, but this is a major capital project for any community, you have to put X amount of dollars up to do the design, to do the scope, to get the schematic design, to work with the, the principles in terms of what it's going to be about, and then you have a dollar figure, which you go to the MSBA for, and you go to the mayor and the city council in terms of funding it. And the private sector would be the opposite way. You know, they would commit with a proposal and say, this is what it's going to cost. Can we afford it? How do we do it? What's it going to cost for an architect? At one time, we had to do everything upfront, and it, there was a good and bad to that, that version, because, you know, if you just didn't, you weren't in favor of it, you didn't hire an architect, you didn't go out and design something. But before any final votes are taken, a, you know, a design will be in front of both the mayor and this body, and whatever decision is made will be made to, to go down the road. The, the issue of two schools and the issues of keeping them together, we did talk about the difference if we don't do two schools, or if we don't do two schools together, you're looking at some additional cost in terms of a second school being down, just, just with the acceleration, cost of construction itself, that could add a couple million dollars to the project down the road. Again, that would be an estimate. I'm not, you know, trying to put anything out there but food for discussion.
I think you said seven.
That's correct. I read that wrong. Thank you, Counsel Leahy. And the, I think there was one other issue. I, I know Counsel Bartley said he didn't hear what Cinder said about we haven't let government. She said that more than once. She said that when she was before us last year. We talked about it this year, this, this past week, in terms of not letting, or doing a good job of not letting government grow. Not saying the government hasn't grown. Government always grows, but when we, we had good times, we didn't, we didn't take advantage of it, and I think this body has been conservative over the years. But there, again, it's, it's information that we're going to need when the time comes, and I think the more information we have, the better decision, educated decision we can make.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. Just in regards to the, the additional cost on the two schools at once, it's not just a matter of dollars and cents. We have a need for one thousand students, alright? These will be fed into the high school. We're going to put five hundred through the new school, and the other five hundred stay in the old system? That doesn't work, alright? So, it's a lot more than a dollars and cents thing. It's what we can do for the kids. As far as the debt exclusion, that three point seven million and the cost to the taxpayers, it's a dollar thirty-five, and the cost to the commercial is two dollars and fifty cents. That's your worst-case scenario. That's if the executive and this body does nothing. That's if the school department does nothing. That's if we don't realize the five hundred thousand dollar savings in busing. That's if we don't realize the one point two energy savings by closing the inefficient schools. It's if we don't do anything about our operating budget, which is something else that was stressed by Cinder also, with our sewer deficit, and other practical matters, as Counsel Bartley said, with doing some planning, as Counsel Bacon has said, with really, you know, getting down to some of the nuts and bolts, and how we really run the city. So, just want to make that clear, that that's a absolute worst-case scenario if we do absolutely nothing else but proceed with the schools without fixing any of our other problems.
Anyone else? Counsel President?
I, I, thank you, Mr. President. I tend to agree with Counsel Bartley. I mean, you know, when Kelly School was built, I was one of, you know, my class was one of the first, first classes to go to Kelly School. And I mean, I don't know that the dynamics of Hoyoke have changed so dramatically. I don't think building new schools is going to change anything. I think that there's bigger health issues, poverty issues, homeless issues, vacant building issues that need to be addressed. I mean, you build a new school, and what is that going to do? Is that, I mean, you know, I mean, I went to a brand-new school in Hoyoke, and I don't know that Hoyoke is any better than it was when they built that school. I just think that, you know, for, for the amount of money, we could have redeveloped Lynch and made a school there, and saved Lynch, and put the school department there, and done all sorts of things. We have to remember that. You know, when we vote on things like the CPA, and, and tax rates, and raising business taxes, and all those sort of things, that impacts people. If you're a business owner and you want to come to the city of Hoyoke and you want to raise a family, well, guess what? You're probably not going to come here. So, we have to be very careful. Every vote that we make, which involves taxes that affects people's property, that affects people's businesses, we have to really vet it out, because, you know, again, we're just going to, what are we going to do? Where's the money coming from? It's coming from the guy that owns the house, the guy that owns the restaurant, the guy that owns the bar, the guy that owns the bodega. We can't keep doing that, because you know what? They're going to go to West Springfield. They're going to go to Chickaby. Look at Memorial Drive, for God's sakes. I mean, you, you can, any type of food you want to eat, any type of store you want to shop at, it's all there, right? Chickaby is number nineteen in the state of Massachusetts, just heard it today on the radio, is the safest community in the state of Massachusetts. They're connected to us by a bridge. Where, where do you think, where do you think these folks are going to go? We need to ensure that we fund public safety, that we have enough fire trucks, we have enough police cars. We can't just keep going to like, you know, because everybody's leaving. You wouldn't believe the kids in Hoyoke that are going to Hatfields Public Schools. You'd be shocked, shocked, how many kids are leaving us to go to different school systems. And building a school, new school, I'm telling you, in my humble opinion, will not change the dynamics of the city of Hoyoke. We need jobs, we need buildings torn down, we need the teenage pregnancy rate to get better, which is doing stuff like that. It's all about the health. It's all about safety, health and safety. You have a health community, you have a community that's healthy, you have a community that's safe, guess what? People will come here with their children and raise a family and go to public school. Building sixty million dollars worth of schools, look at Dean Vocational, what a, what a great, that was awesome. Dean Volk was great. And we're, we're, there's no, like, a community like Hoyoke, we need a vocational school, because not everybody's, is fit for college in poor communities like ours. I probably wasn't fit for college. I should have gone to Dean Vocational. I have my regrets, but, you know, it is what it is. We're losing schools, we're tearing down Lynch, we're losing a vocational school, and what are we going to do? We're going to, we're going to spend sixty million dollars on a couple schools we don't even have the money for? It's logic, it just doesn't make sense.
Counsel Anderson Burgos?
I'm, I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to everybody. I'm trying to make sense of it, and one of the things I keep thinking about is, you know, I, I believe in the future of the city, and we do have to watch how we spend. I'm conservative in that case, you know, when, when, when I think about the money that comes in, in and out of my household, I have to balance that budget. In the greater scheme of things, when it's, when we're talking about a community like Hoyoke, I think about the future, and I think about the children, and I believe that these children deserve better. I'm, I'm willing to gamble on the future success of the, the children of the city. We really need to think and look, these are our children, and when you invest into a community, it, it gives back. We just have to believe. We have to believe in that, and I do.
Anyone else? So, the three orders were taken up, A, B, and C as a package. Motion is to receive and adopt the committee report as complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There was no public safety, no, we do have public service, thirteen A.
Yeah, make a motion to receive, adopt, and defer.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and confirm public's service to whom was referred, appointing Mark Cutting to serve as a member of HEDEC, and all members have signed off. Under discussion?
Yeah, under discussion. Mark Cutting is probably, probably everybody in this room knows him. He's a fine gentleman, a fine businessman. He owns C and D Electronics. He's been in the city of Hoyoke for thirty-five years. He's had his business, which is global, a global business, for about thirty years. He's into aerospace and engineering. He also owns the property that GTI, now known as RISE Holdings, owns. So, he is very interested and very knowledgeable in industrial businesses, buildings. I think it's a great pick by the mayor. I think Mr. Cutting is going to do an excellent job. He's raised his... Cutting is going to do an excellent job. He's raised his beautiful children here. I can't say enough about him.
Anyone else? Counsel Lisi.
Thanks. We had a brief but really great discussion with Mr. Cutting last night. He was previously on the HEDEC board. He was also previously on the Geriatric Authority, so he understands the city's business, and in particular, he wants to revitalize some of the revolving loans and microloan opportunities that HEDEC has to offer. And he has a vision for a beautified industrial community, and I'd like to see what that vision looks like, in particular, because he was one of the first folks to open up his doors and his building to the cannabis industry. I'd like to see him do some more work in bringing businesses down, industrial businesses downtown.
There's no one else. Motion is to receive and adopt and approve the confirmation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 13B, Committee on Public Service who was referred, review, appointment of Rachel Garber to the Library Board of Directors, recommended that be confirmed, signed off by everybody.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, and approve the confirmation.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and approve. Under discussion? Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, she's very well spoken. She came down. She's a midwife. She works at Hoyoke Hospital. She's lived in the city of Hoyoke for about 10 years. She's already been going to the meetings at the library. One of her little missions, not little, but one of her missions is gaining more access for people to come down to the library, and to do so, she's going to do outreach in the public schools. Once again, another fine pick by the mayor.
There's no further discussion. Motion is to confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 13C, Public Service Referring, order that the City Council adopt the resolution to support the local control over municipal clean energy standards and portfolios, recommended that be complied with.
Make a motion to be complied with.
Motion is to be complied with. Under discussion? Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, we had James Lovell, not to get confusion with the JP Lovell, it's James Lovell from Gas and Electric. He came down and discussed the different proposal. Actually, I'll kick it over to Counsel Lisi. You file the order.
Thanks. So this was a resolution to help the G and E advocate to our state legislature, carve-outs that would allow municipal light and power companies to have the hydro and solar and the renewable portfolio that they have count towards the renewable portfolio standards that the state has set. Currently, even though we have an abundance of hydropower, the state doesn't recognize that, and so the G and E, along with other municipal light companies, have been working on carving, carving out, I guess, exemptions so that they are able to get credit for the portfolios that they have. It seems that it didn't, the state legislation didn't go anywhere last session, and so we will be refiling this resolution with new docket numbers for the next session that's beginning in January, so stay tuned. And that's about it for now.
Okay, so the motion is to receive.
It's just to comply that we had the discussion.
Okay, motion is, it's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, if we could take 13D and also 13E as a package?
Suspend the rules, take up D and E as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D is, Committee on Public Service who was referred, in order that the mayor coordinate with the H G and E and the Hoyoke Police Department to provide training to all municipal employees on how to identify and deal with cyber threats. And then E is H G and E, along with HPD, develop protocol to identify, report, alert city hall employees of cyber threats and avoid them.
Yeah, so make a motion to receive and to have it complied with.
Motion is to receive and comply with. Under discussion? Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, we had Kurt Jonas, along with James Lovell, come down in front of us. Kurt is the expert when it comes to the communication side of the gas and electric portfolio. One of the things that they're doing in regards to training their employees is every new employee has to do an online series of SOPs, I would say, or some sort of internet training. And what they do is they send out fake emails to get a baseline of where people are at looking at spam. So they get that baseline, then they do the training, then they're asked to notify, I don't exactly know how to do it, but in my previous employment, anytime we saw something that was, that we thought was spam, we had to forward that email to this email address, and they monitored that, and they went from a 20, I'm sorry.
10.
From the baseline was a 10% of bad links, and it went down to 3% of bad links that people were opening. And I asked if Jim Lovell was a part of that 3%, but they wouldn't tell me. So hopefully he's not. But this program that they're utilizing is one that big pharmaceutical companies were using as well, and it's about $2,500 a year, but that's a huge percentage change, 10% to 3%. So maybe that's something that the city hall should look at itself. They have two people that they work in city hall, the gas and electric, for training purposes, and also looking at the firewall. But it was Counsel Lisi's order, so feel free to take the ball.
Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. So I think that Counsel Leahy covered it pretty well. I think the only thing to know is that the HR is currently trying to make a selection between the cybersecurity training, web-based training that the G and E uses or another vendor's model. And then we asked them, you know, these orders were filed in light of the cybersecurity breach that happened in the treasurer's office earlier this year. So part of it is making sure that our staff is informed and aware of how to circumvent these cyber threats. They said that's about 90% of the threat that we encounter, like the training, the web-based training, and just getting the employees up to date on cyber threats. The other 10% is going to be, you know, how do we, how do we monitor the firewalls, and then how do we also, I asked the G and E to follow up with the police department to figure out, like, what things need to happen once there is a breach in order to secure the information that we need for the Hoyoke Police Department to then pursue the case. So it's one thing that there's a breach. We want to do our best to prevent those breaches, but in the case that there is some sort of a security breach, what information do we need to be able to capture so that the police department can pursue the perpetrator successfully?
Counsel Tomlin?
Excellent order, and taking this up. I think it's important that we all have training, you know, and today especially, not even at our homes, on our phones, everywhere. And, you know, every day we deal with, you know, attacks, cyber attacks. You hear about these breaches that thousands and thousands of people's records are getting taken. So to have people do this in our training in our city hall here and all the employees that work, I think is really important when we get this going because, you know, this could happen again, and we have to be alert for it to, and to catch it while it's happening.
Anyone else?
So motion is that.
Complied with.
Been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Development of Government Relations, or DGNR. 14A, Committee on Development of Government Relations, to whom was referred. May I ask General Law 30B that the Hoyoke Procurement Ordinance vote to accept an offer of $10,000 from the Hoyoke Housing Authority to purchase and develop 144 High Street.
Motion received and adopt their committee report.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and under discussion. Counsel Bartley.
Yep, Hoyoke Housing withdrew, and the story.
Okay, so motion is that receive and adopt that given leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And no charter and rules, no joint committee. Motion to orders and resolution. 17 is from Counsel McGivern.
Suspend the rules to take it up this evening for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules to act on tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is that there here be appropriated $4,477.56 from patrolmen to injured-on-duty. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion? Counsel McGivern?
Again, this is a transfer for accounting purposes of salary monies from the salary line item to the injured-on-duty. Anytime one of our, especially our public safety officers file for injured-on-duty, whether it's for a day or two days or over the weekend while they get evaluated, this money needs to be transferred in because it comes out under a separate accounting. If there's no questions, Mr. President, do we have how many this time, or?
This is two.
Thank you. We, I would recommend that we just adopt it this evening.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Colerole, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
He's trying to beat Joltin' Joel to the punch there, you know?
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy.
Mr. President, make a motion to, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Counsel McGivern?
Take a motion to suspend the rules to take 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 as a package.
Motion is to take 18 to 23 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Refer to Committee on Finance.
They'll go to Finance. 18 is that $11,981 be authorized from the mayor's Office, Department of City Liabilities and Damages Insurance. 19 is a 2019 traffic enforcement grant. 20 is emergency management preparedness grant. 21 is $3,541.20 be authorized from Board of Health Department advertising appropriation from a prior year. 22 is accept the donation of 14 Glocks, 20 on firearms, and ballistic vests. That's another grant. And 23 is $19,500 from DPW Police Mechanic to police motor vehicle repairs. So all those together and refer to Finance.
Discussion real quick. We're scheduled for a meeting on this coming Monday. Ask our administrative assistant. I'll talk to you tomorrow, Ryan, if we could add these to the agenda. We have some grants that were held over from the last meeting. And the big item on Monday is going to be the Water Department coming in. We've met with them in recent meetings about their proposed capital budget and for, I think it's up to like 10 years, that they're looking to pay for of projects in like a 20-year bond to do that. That will be the main topic of the agenda, but they're getting, this time of year, as we're getting near the end of the calendar year, there are a lot of grants coming in, and just to keep them in a timely fashion, we'll take them up and vote on them accordingly.
All right, so all those to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item 24 from Counsel Vacan. Order that the following action take in place to strengthen the financial conditions of our city as per recommendations of Cinder McNeely, that the Debt Management Stabilization Fund be established, that the financial plan to improve the bond rating from A+ to AA be established, that a minimum of 10% of the budget be maintained in the stabilization fund with the goal of increasing it to 15% of the budget prior to funds being used from the funds of others than emergency purposes.
Receive and refer to Finance, please.
Second.
For Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
With maker's permission, could you add Sullivan to that?
Adding on Counsel Sullivan to 24, please. 25 is from Counsel Bartley. Order that the catch station at West Glen Street and Martin Street does not appear to properly function. Please repair ASAP. So refer to DPW Engineering Suez.
That's the motion, yep.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
26.
Can we take 26 and 27 as a package abbreviated reading and refer to DGR, please?
26 and 27 as a package, suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 26, Hoyoke Board of Assessors.
So it's 106, 108 Main, and then two James.
So these are going to go to DGR.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 28 is already done. 29 is from Counsel Leahy, that the Honorable Hoyoke City Council present a proclamation to Mike Pleasance for his 31 years at the Springfield Republican and the governor of the city of Hoyoke for 15 of those years.
Received, adopted, sent to Mrs. Allen for a beautiful proclamation that she does.
Motion is to receive, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And he's also having, Republicans having, I'm not sure if it's Republican, but a bunch of people are getting together tomorrow night. I believe it's at Pizza Uno's in Springfield at 6 o'clock, kind of a going-away farewell party for him.
You want to invite him in here for the.
Oh, yeah, certainly, but I'm just letting people know that.
Perfect, thank you. 30 from Counsel McGee, that the DPW and/or the Water Department plow old East Hampton Road in the parking area to the reservoir. Motion would be receive, adopt, send to both?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 31 from Counsel McGee, that HPD enforced a no parking along Jarvis Ave and old East Hampton Road. There have been several complaints to the illegal parking. Motion would be receive, adopt, and send to HPD.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 32.
Received, adopted.
Second.
From Counsel McGee, that with the changeover in the auditor's position and prior accounting issues, the city higher former auditor Brian Smith on a consultant basis. This request was discussed and confirmed in prior Finance Committee meetings. Motion is to receive, adopt, and send to the auditor. She'd have to do a financial request for it. Adding on Counsel Brestneren?
Can you add me to it?
Counsel Vacan?
Point of information?
Counsel Vacan?
In the current situation, we have our official auditor and we still have our acting auditor. So how are we funding that and how would we fund this?
They'd have to take from a line item. I know they're proposing to take from the auders, another auditor position to pay for raises. I saw that in a transfer. So it'd be finding their budget.
So you think they're paying Bellamy out of that and they could pay Brian out of that?
I think they're paying Bellamy out of a different position that became vacant.
Okay.
But this was discussed when we had the outside auders come in to deal with the health accounting where there was a calculation mistake from both Bellamy and Josh. That was corrected, but we'll go right back into it if the new person is not trained on the, so, and that was confirmed in the meeting. So motion is receive, adopt, and send to the auditor to find the funds and contact Brian.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Last one is A, Stabilization Fund Policy, City of Hoyoke effective March 2016. The city's total, is it C? Let me see, I haven't seen this before. So stabilization fund and free cash be maintained at 5%, 10% of the city prior generation. The primary objective of the city's policy is provide the city with flexibility sustaining services.
I'm not following it.
It almost looks like a breakdown of the stabilization fund and some of the rules associated with it.
Make a motion to receive.
It's a communication.
Who filed this?
It's a communication.
Communication.
All right, so I don't know what that is.
Make a motion to receive.
It's a late file.
Committee on Finance, a copy to everybody.
So it's a late file. You can either kick it off the next meeting or send it to Finance.
Send it to Finance.
All right, motion is to suspend the rules, take up, or actually, don't even suspend the rules. You have to just send a copy to Finance, and then we'll get a copy, everyone else.
Don Corleone over.
All those in favor?
[laughing]
All opposed? One last thing.
I don't know if they're a gift, but.
Who filed the order?
I guess I'm getting rid of the gavel.
Just calling me out at Christmas morning.
Because these were left on the floor.
[laughing]
Motion, are these yours?
Those are for you.
I'd also notice that the Christmas tree is trying to black Counsel Sullivan.
So the motion is.
Most to adjourn.
Right, motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's it, that's all she wrote.